We have about two more minutes left. If you have any public comment, please sign in. Just as a reminder, if you guys have any public comments, just to sign on the public comment sheet.
Did you actually sign?
Yeah. It was a GS4. Be severe storm. Yeah, right here. You see him?
Little bit.
There's all over the north.
Yeah.
You can see the peaks, Wingsday during the day. I saw pictures in Missouri. It was crazy.
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome to Thursday, November 13th, Overe City Council meeting. We're going to go ahead and start with our invocation by Mr. Ted Hawkins. Do you want to join us?
Holy Father, we give thanks for the blessing of this day that you've given us, Father of this beautiful weather that you've sent our way. We continue to pray, Father, for the blessing of rain, but we give thanks for all that are gathered here at the Stephen, Father, to take charge and to deal with the issues of the city that you've given us. We pray, Father, that you grant us our wisdom and grant us discernment that we might make wise decisions that would benefit our city and the residents as well. We thank you, Father, for this blessing.
Okay, I call the meeting to order at six thirty. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. I believe in all who serve us in America. And I do believe in all who wish us hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my behalf, I believe in the King of the Lord. One safe, under God, one individual.
All right, everybody, call this meeting to order. We have the council present. We have Mayor Phil Hayes, who will be joining us via Zoom. So for our charter, we have a presiding officer, and I'll be the presiding officer for today's meeting. All right, honor reports, presentations, and proclamations out of two A Police Department summary of October 2025 activities.
You have me for you, the October monthly report. The police department had 1,250 calls for service since the month of October, sixteen total arrests, thirty-three crashes, so a lot of crashes that month. I'm not sure why it's so high there, but it is quite a few. Average speed citation over the limit, twenty-three point four miles an hour on Highway 21, fourteen point five on Highway 46, twelve miles an hour over average on FM 1863, and almost twenty everywhere else in the city. If you have any comments, questions, concerns, I'd be glad to answer those for you.
I have one comment and three questions. First comment, after I read through your report, I want to continue to thank you and the police department for the outstanding job that you do. You guys really have your hands full out there, but you do an outstanding job with the things that come into.
Appreciate that, thank you.
First question, I saw in there that Comel County is refusing to accept people now on warrant.
Their jail is over full, basically. So they're rejecting any type of class C misdemeanors with the exception of like thefts, public intoxication, things like that. Any class C warrants, they won't even accept them at this point.
Something you did a long ago, it's advertising for clients.
So what do we do in that case? Catch and release?
We always try to collect something on the warrants when we stop them for hours, not for the countings. But we always try to collect something from them if we can, and then we bring that back to the court. The court sets them a new court date. But yeah, it's pretty much catch and release for the most part. Yep, unfortunately.
I noticed that. Is there anything that we could do, add on 281, to slow these guys down? I noticed that the average speed was now up to, average citation was eighty-eight point four miles an hour on 281.
So there's probably one there that was real high, probably a hundred plus, that kind of used it just a tad.
Obviously, we often put maximum citation on that.
I mean, it averages about fifteen, eighteen miles an hour.
I know. I've seen that.
Quite honestly, no. I mean, not unless we dedicate traffic units, and they stay pretty busy already anyway.
I know.
Yeah.
But you know that's going to lead to more and more of these accidents, and eventually more fatalities for us that we have to deal with.
And it's only going to get worse.
I know.
Yeah.
I know, and it's.
Speed bumps maybe to anyone?
Not a bad idea, actually. Okay, last question. I had some constituents who've reached out to me a couple of times, trying to get an accurate definition of what we mean when we say through traffic and how that's being enforced by BPD. What I've told them is what I think through traffic means is that if you're just cutting through the city of Overe and you're not actually making stops or deliveries with a truck or vehicle, that would fit what I think the definition is. But if you're in a truck or vehicle and you are making deliveries inside of the city, then I don't perceive that as through traffic. But I'm interested in what, how it's being, how the BPD interprets and enforces.
So as far as from a through traffic standpoint, we don't enforce any type of through traffic. It's just through trucks.
Right.
So, and the whole reason that that was created back in the, when EA was the city manager, because they had just rebuilt a portion of this lower portion, the east side of Overe Road. And with all the growth, we've had the community, it was the eighteen wheelers. Martin Marietta has got a huge quarry down here off Spencer Valley Road inside Bear County, and then there's another one down Ops Road as well, too, towards Blanco. And so these trucks were loading at Martin Marietta, coming up Overe Road to 46 to go out to Burney because of all the growth that's going on in Burney as well, too. So that was the reason that the no-through trucks came about when we first created it. So if we see a vehicle and we're not on our way to another call or something, we're just patrolling and we see a truck that fits that description coming through on Overe Road, technically, we can stop and ask questions. And we usually ask them, you know, where are you headed to? And if they say, well, I'm headed to a location inside of city limits, we will usually ask them for a bill of late. And say, okay, do you have something less, you know, where'd you just way out at? What's the location you're going to? And we'll ask those questions. For the first offense, we're right in the warning. If there's a second offense and we pull up and they are in the system for no-through trucks, we issue a violation, we issue a citation.
Okay.
So that's basically what it consists of. Now, do we sit out there and stop every single truck that comes through Overe? It's impossible.
Of course.
Just do not have the manpower to do that.
Yeah, I understand. So essentially, if it is a through truck, they're at risk of being stopped and at risk of being issued a citation. If there's a local delivery, though, they're not at risk.
Well, we're not going to know unless we stop them.
Good, yeah.
You know, we're not going to follow them through the city and see where they're going.
Right.
If they're on that road, if their truck is in violation of that ordinance, then we will stop and ask questions.
Okay.
And during that interview, we'll make a decision on, okay, are they legally here, not legally here, what type of action you want to take.
Okay, I'll pass that along. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to item two B, financials.
Good evening, Mayor. Proton Mayor. Everyone. So tonight, our financials are through September. I say that loosely because there's some audit activity that kind of happens since this year end, so there may be some adjustments in some of the numbers. For revenue collections, we're for the month of September, five hundred and seventy-six thousand for our revenue for the year. We collected a hundred and nine point six-six percent of our budget, which is really good. This last month for September and year-to-date, we've had a lot of planning permits. I guess there's a new housing development and we're being loaded up with those permit requests. And then our investment income, we earned about eighty-seven, almost eighty-eight thousand more than what we thought we were going to do for the budget. That's really nice. Expenditures for the month of September, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen. Those were all normal expenditures. The higher than normal expenditures, we had the settlement wages that we paid out. And then the Civic Plus software renewals were about thirty-eight thousand for the month because we realigned them. Some of them had hit last year in, I think, August or October, and then we just went ahead and realigned them on their correct renewal dates. So we aligned all of that, so that was a big chunk. Let's see, year-to-date expenditures, we're at ninety-four point two-one percent. And again, these, like I said, these amounts may change a little bit. I know we're going to get some accruals to account for the sales tax and the mixed beverage taxes that are coming in. Also, for the month of October, we had right at about almost twenty-four thousand in interest income. And our sales tax, let's see, for September, two hundred and ninety-six thousand for a fiscal year, total of three million, six hundred and sixty-nine, almost six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is really nice. Without the audit income, the revenue increased eighty-six thousand, two point five one percent over fiscal year 24. And thirteen point two percent, thirteen point three-two percent over the fiscal year for the 2025 fiscal year budget. That's that. Do you all have any questions on that? And the audit is scheduled for the first week of January, so she should start pulling her reports and things, probably some time and be started going on all of that, going through all of it. But they'll be here on site that first week of January. Year-end is just about done. I've got some accruals. I'm waiting on the third quarter income to come in, revenue, franchise taxes, hot tax, sales tax, and mixed beverage, so I can put it in the fiscal year. And then we'll be done.
Good.
Thank you.
Turned in the right way.
Yeah.
All right, any questions?
No questions here.
Good, thank you.
I'd like all the information.
Beginning of the month of finances before, or the two B?
Yeah, the investment. Yeah, for the investment for the quarter three for 2025 year-end, fiscal year-end. We basically had a net increase, revenue increase of ninety-eight thousand. And we did have some activity in the Texas class, but that was basically taking monies from the municipal court security and technology funds and moving it to the general operating funds. So other than that, all of the activity was just interest income. And looking at the T bills in comparison. The T bills for thirteen weeks, they were at four point nine, teen percent, twenty-six weeks, three point nine, and fifty-two weeks, three point eight-eight. So we're kind of right there in the middle, and so we're doing pretty good. And this year, with Mr. Cap's help, we're going to do some things now that we have a better idea of where our money is and when we're going to need it and things like that. So we're going to do some other investment, have some other ideas we're going to work on. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to public works department summary for October 2025 activities.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Karen Martinez, Public Works Director. Brief explanation of what Public Works did this month. We did some mowing on Overe Road, Amen Road. There's some storms agreed from the last storm that we had. Cleared out some vegetation again for better sight distance issues. Road signs, we did order some signs and did some replacement of some signs. School zone flasher batteries went out on widely roads, we had to replace those. Parks, we held a ribbon cutting back in October, day of last council. Did some mowing at the park and trimming at the park. We also prepared for Christmas lighting, so our Christmas tree is up at the lodge, so if you haven't given by there, it's up already. We did purchase and received our new SCAG that we budgeted from last year. Thank you again for your support for that. It came, did come in under budget. Budgeted twenty thousand, we ended up purchasing it for fourteen thousand, under fifteen thousand. So that was good. So now we have two very good commercials, zero churn.
How does that measure up against the Batwing?
What's that?
The Batwing, the other one you were looking at? Is that the same over deck or?
Ah, no, no, no. The Batwing one is about, I think, twelve-foot deck. This one's more of a sixty-two inch deck.
Okay.
So that one's a little bit more. That was like fifty thousand dollars. So one of the items that we did do, that we did move from Noah's Park over to the Overe Storage because of the units that we have, so now we have three mowers. So we needed a bigger space. Noah's Storage was ten by thirty and nine foot high. So at the Overe Storage, we're a bigger storage unit, there's the fourteen by forty, fourteen foot highs, where you can build some shelves, even create like a workbench for the guys to work. And it only increased our budget by fifty dollars, so we're still within our budget range for the year, so we took the opportunity to do that. Community events, we did have a big trash day. Wasn't as big as the last trash event. We did collect eight and a half tons that day. We also did some generator training for emergency operations services, and we also hired a new employee, new to me, but I think he's an old new employee to the city of Overe. Yes, Agent Valdez. He worked with us for five years. He's our new old employee, so new to me, but I'm glad to have him back because he has been asked. Yes, yeah, he knows his stuff around the city.
Excellent.
And that's my report. Any questions?
Fourth P, the Cravis Park. I don't know if you noticed, it got washed out.
Yes, yes, we're looking at actually moving that tee because the original place where that tee's at is right in front of that little creek. So we're going to take the opportunity to move that over probably a little further more, that tee box to get it out of that ravine, so yeah.
Increase the complexity of just parking behind another tree.
Yeah. Haven't totally put a tree there, so. Yes, yes, it's on our radar.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So I wanted to ask real quick, I know that Ron Hurst had sent in an email about his concern on Grand Road on that construction damage that he did done to the road. Sorry that you respond to that. Thank you for doing that. Were we able to get the guilty party, the contractor that did that, to do that road repair?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I too, the Grand Road, I had already seen the damage done on Shepherd Road on the same power line. And I contacted LCR. LCR? LCR, yeah, to fix that, they put that on their list. And then when the Grand Road came up, they put that one on the list. And I have to report that they both of them are.
Great. That's good. Second question was, when are we going to be able to start construction on that compound that we funded for this fiscal year so that you have some storage space here in the city?
Yeah, once, I've already sent some preliminary pictures and area to a local vendor that deals with fences and structures like that. I'm in the process of getting some pricing and stuff to see what's optimal. One of the first things that we want to do is actually put the fence around.
Yeah.
But we want to put a fence that'll, you know, not have to do it twice, but one nice fence that'll max PD. So I've sent in pictures of that, so I'm waiting for a price to come back.
Will that help you? Will that help you anything with your storage related stuff or?
Yes, it will help with the bigger equipment, like the mowers, you know. The storage unit does help us because it is larger, so we're actually able to park our trailer with the mowers on top of it. Instead of having to pull the trailer, open it up, we just back up.
That's a time saver.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, we will, in the process.
Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. All right, moving on to two D, planning department summary of October 25 activities.
All right, Mayor, members of city council. We were luckily able to clear the decks a little bit after the last council meeting, got a lot of big projects and applications off of our plate. So we've been focusing back on some longer-term projects. There's a number of ordinances and cleanup ordinances that are needed. We're finally making progress on that. We had a discussion with Planning Commission last, or the last meeting about revising the sign ordinance, dealing with some attached signs and the way to calculate that. They wanted to take a little bit more look at it. So we're going to come back to them next in December and discuss that a little more. We're also working on ordinances to make some changes to comply with recent state statutes that are going to require a few tweaks to our ordinance. And we also were able to wrap up all of the emergency management training for planning department. So we're now at that goal and just getting ready for the next round. If I got any questions, I'll be glad to have them.
Any questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, do you have any update on item two E, park and recreation reports?
Good evening, Council, good evening, Mayor. For the Parks Department, we just went over discussions on new park benches versus money that Overe Optimists have donated and want to use that money for the parks. So we're looking at allocating, running towards those benches, but we need to decide on how many benches we actually need to place, to either replace or add in some of the park areas. That was one discussion. The other discussion was speaking to council about a decision on the possible park property. We're not sure if we should start making some decisions on that, or that still rests with council on what we want to do with that. And looking to meet more with the community as to what the community is looking for in the park. So we're possibly thinking about having some meet and greets at the music in the park and movies in the park come next year. I don't think they have any questions.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea on the, on the, you definitely need to do some workshops to get very good, you know, start planning that, you know, so we can have a good plan, but definitely with the community, but what they're looking to see and what they're looking for, so. You all have any idea where you're going to put a visual park bench?
Yeah. We, I have to wait to see, we have electrical lines in the park that need to, we need to address as to if we can put more concrete to set these park benches on and where that placement will be.
Okay, good, yeah. I had a recommendation by a couple older folks, they say when they're walking around the walking trail, there's nowhere really to sit, so that'd be a good place for a bench.
Yep.
I have another question. It's, I don't know if it's necessarily toward Judama or more toward Karen. We have lighting that goes all the way around the walking trail now, right? Did we get, did that involve getting all of that or we only do up close?
The lighting around the trail does not go all the way around the back.
It doesn't?
It only goes on, close to the gazebo. I think there's three light bulbs that go towards the back, but it does not, they do not go all the way.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, it was a really dark day today when I was there and saw that, you know, I didn't know if we had some or just didn't have one, or if they just, we never put lighting here.
Yeah, if there was no lighting. Okay, and that is, that is part of the master plan.
Sure.
As far as the lighting.
Thank you, yes. Thank you. That was it?
That's all. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Moving on to regular chats. Item three A, discuss and consider approval of city council meeting minutes from the following dates. Regular city council meeting on October 14th, 2025, special city council meeting on October 23rd, 2025. Do you have any comments?
Joe, I read and reviewed the meeting minutes. I found no errors, no omissions, so I'd like to make a motion to approve, I should.
All right, do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Hey, see you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item three B. Discuss and consider approval of ordinance of the city of Overe, Texas, amending the budget for fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Repealing conflicting ordinances providing a severability clause providing effective date.
Good evening. This is to recognize the previously approved grant application that the police department submitted. They were actually awarded the money, so this is to recognize the grant of seventy-five thousand for PD grant and then also the increase in police department vehicles for seventy-five thousand.
That's fantastic. I know that we approved the budget amendment, sorry, ordinance.
We approve and ordinance the city of Overe, Texas, amending the budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and repealing conflicting ordinances providing a severability clause providing effective date.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, is that? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Congratulations, two.
Thank you for pursuing those grants. Y'all are really good about that. Really helped.
Moving on to item three C, presentation, discussion and possible action for 2026 street maintenance plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Karen Martinez, Public Works Director. Tonight, I'll be giving a brief overview of the. A brief overview of the fiscal year 25, 26 road maintenance program. Joining me today is Scott Gordon with the roadway asset services, firm that completed our most recent citywide payment assessment. For summary this year, council approved the $1.5 million budget for roadway and drainage improvements. That funding allows us to continue proactive, data-driven maintenance approach that extends life of our streets and protects the city along with investment. As the assessment conducted by RES in June gave us a current look at our overall health of our street network. Last time we did our street network assessment, we're back in 2020. As you can see on the slide, our overall network PCI is at eighty-three. Payment index condition runs on a zero to one hundred. So back in 2016, citywide PCI was fifty-nine, overall condition index was fifty-nine. 2018 was sixty-one, sixty-four, you can see the trend going up. So it's your direction. And I commend this and to the city for the investment that they do on their streets. You know, back in 2016, admission vessel was seven hundred and fifty thousand. As you can see, it's increased, doubled that in the last ten years. That's a good trend. Why pavement management matters. Our goal is to extend the pavement life at the lowest possible cost. Payment managing pavement proactively, we reduce long-term maintenance, reconstruction costs, improve the overall ride quality and safety for residents, delay expensive full reconstruction projects for as long as possible. In short, protecting the city's infrastructure, investment by treating road before they fail. And this is a good chart of the degradation curve. The more money you spend when the street is in very good condition, the longer that street will last. This first curve right here shows if you do absolutely nothing to the street, the degradation curve goes down, so you end up spending a lot more money in the long run. So we're trying to trend as a payment reservation. How prioritize it works? I'm going to let Scott talk about how this project was selected.
All right, thank you. Basically, if you look at this, this chart here with the red graphs, so each road that we analyze, we put it in a category. We give it a score, it goes into these categories, but these bars are representing, the red ones are good, fair, poor type categories. If you look at the yellow bar at the lower end of those, okay? The streets that fall into those conditions, if we don't apply maintenance in the next year or two, they're going to deteriorate in condition, they're going to fall into a lower category. If you look at the white box that's there, there's a dollar figure in there, that is the difference between the two red bars, okay? So what that represents is cost of defer. If we choose not to treat a road this next year and it deteriorates out of that lower range into the next red bar, the number in that white bar is how many dollars per square yard in addition, that's going to cost us to go treat that road. So what we try to do with optimization is focus on highest priority on those roads that fall into condition in those yellow bars, meaning they're the lowest edge of that zone and they're the most critical priority. If we don't treat those, it's going to cost us more money to go out. If a road, for example, is in the higher end of that red zone, it may deteriorate a few years, but it'll still cost us the same amount of money to go treat. So based on that theory, we go through your entire network and say, which roads are most critical that we treat now to save money and get the best benefit of it. So that's the basis of this optimization that we went through. I think if you look at the next slide, Aaron, if you want to talk about the conditions, talk about the song.
Yeah, so this is an overall snapshot of our work. Green is good. The more green you see on, on the map, the better our condition of the roads are. Very few red, you know, orange, serious type of road condition. Again, this goes back to investment the city has made into the streets, so that's the good pictures. This is a PCI activity table, these are the ranges Scott talked about that we put, that we applied to our, our street network. Eighty six and ninety five is really good, you know, you start looking at the preservation, surface seal, crack seal, rejuvenation. Seventy eighty five category, decent street to do some surface treatments, fog seals, very sealed micro surface, chip seal with some fog seal, and then you get into your yellow and reds, which you don't want to get your streets into. You know, you start the rehabilitation, the mill and overlay, reconstruction, full depth reclamation. So what we're trying to target is try to keep a lot of these, these green, green, stay away from the red and yellow. So overall, these are the proposed streets that were identified during the analysis. As you can see, there's, they're rated priority, one through thirteen, this is the supply view. And this is actual treatment that are, that are identified for that street and the tune from that street. So our timeline, if, if council decides, we, you know, we go out and get the specifications from Chris Nichols or our engineer. They get the bid package ready, get estimates, hopefully we go out for bid in March sooner, better. Projected contract award back in April, then a three month estimated construction duration from May through July. Of course, these are, are estimated timeframes, sooner the better, getting these bid packages out the better we are. Any questions?
So based on the weather that we have here, Aaron, when is the best time to actually do this work to get the greatest effect from the dollars that we spend?
Anytime we do any type of, for example, chip seal is a big category, if we don't do chip seal, the temperatures are below fifty degrees. It's, if they dip below fifty degrees overnight, your, your emulsion doesn't stick well to the ground, you'll have loose rock and it's a total fit. So typically you want to, you want to start chip sealing when the temperature is above fifty five. Really honestly to be on the safe side, if they're above sixty five, a continuous, you know, five to seven days and we're looking at future temperatures, you really want them up to the fifty, sixty.
So this is in April, May, top of the graph?
This is in April, yeah, most, most chip sealing.
You do like July, the hotter the better.
Yeah, the hotter the better.
We've got an ordinance in place that Gray was putting before he left to set it so that we didn't have these end of year things so that.
Correct.
To get into that road.
Especially the hot mixed stuff, that, that's a little bit more.
That's it, we could do it in March, I'd like to get as many as possible, we could do hot mixed stuff early.
Yes.
You know, potholes, edger bear, that way people could drive on it, you see if the, the repair taped well. Chip seal stuff.
Right, yeah, and, and the type of chip seal that we use is the grade five trap rock.
Good.
So it's not the limestone type of trap rocks. Yeah.
You're still white.
So, yeah, so. It'd be a grade five.
We're still using that polymer emulsion?
Yes, the CHS two RP.
That's the good stuff.
Yes, yes, high flow, yes.
What's the interval for this assessment, are you doing it annually or is it?
No, we have, the assessment is typically done anywhere from three to five years, okay? We have plans for the following year, the year after, the year after. That's all dependent on what we do this year. We, we, we do all these roads and okay, then we'll set the plan for next year, the year after that. Typically, we'll want to come through the assessment three to five years after. So, and it'll kind of tell us, okay, at that point, the effect of the treatment that we're doing this year.
So the first one up there, probably on Edgewood subdivision, that's the entire subdivision?
That is the entire subdivision.
It's a relatively big subdivision.
Yes, and correct.
AV built.
Yeah, and, and that's a good price for you guys.
Maybe too much life.
No, what, what we're doing is that we're doing a preservation. And what we try to do in a preservation program is treat the streets that are good now. And that's where the degradation curve is at. When the streets are in good condition, that is the actual time that you do want to be able to treat a street with a low cost preservation method. And so that's why we're, we're, we're touching those, we don't, we want to be able to, to keep that PCI high.
Yeah, so that's my original question about the interval, it's done on like three to five year.
Yes.
Okay, so you have this good data points now and for planning, if you continue to maintain these data points on a three to five year interval. Wouldn't it be better to maintain a higher interval if we get eyes on our? It's not a cheap study. Not cheap study, but it's one of the most. It's like a hundred thousand, a two year, a hundred thousand dollars. We have the numbers, right, we have.
Yeah, yeah, we have.
Do you have that and update the data as necessary or just try to your own best?
No, basically what we'll do on the PCI is that every time we touch a street, we actually increase that interval for that, that PCI for that street. Now, we keep that in house, okay? Now, to do an overall assessment again, it's typically standardized throughout, you know, PCI is three to five years.
That's standard.
It's standard, it's a standard, yeah, three to five years.
Yeah, it does, yeah, there you add just a little bit to it, the deterioration rate's usually about one to two PCI points per year when you have that upgraded. So if we do it too frequently, you're going to get a little scatter in there, you're really not going to see any detail. Understand that, it's really not cost effective. So what we do is wait three to five years, you'll see significant deterioration. And those curves are accurate to about three to five years. The further we get away from that point, yeah, you're, you're relying on a model to be accurate that we won't vary, that's what.
Just like a quick little search, I didn't see any hard and fast, three to five is two to five, that, that's heated. And I just see the value going and looking at all of our streets in the same conditions of, of, you know, there might be some type of activity that has brought extra, extra heavy traffic across that road and that assumes one or two points a year to down the group, to the group because of that additional.
That, that, that gets changed, sir. Well, it was Aaron Pond.
Yeah, Aaron's watching.
But yeah, you're knowing the subdivision going in and where that growth happens, so you've got to keep an eye on that.
And, and I could see a scenario where we go out and look maybe at the, the worst fifty percent or the worst thirty percent and just keep an eye on, just to get out there, make sure that that doesn't accelerate to the floor. And, and make sure we're doing that probably on an annual basis, I don't hope that that would be that difficult to do and I could see probably the next year or two incorporating that into our.
Yeah, and, and the nice thing about having the, the actual PCI on streets that, you know, we, we, we're looking at, you know, we know with the map, basically what streets we need to start keeping an eye on.
I just want us to work smarter and harder.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the, you know, just the perfect plan on the rehabilitation and rejuvenation on, on the maintenance stuff on these higher PCIs to keep them up, is that we spend, you know, dollar to four dollars now, I'm not spending that fifty five dollars a road.
Preventative maintenance.
The mayor has questions as well.
I have a question. I have a question. Hello? Hey, I have a question. In, in what, in what we've looked at, how many of these roads that were in red and you went kind of fast through the, through the map? Actually butt up to a, a county road. And the reason I'm asking is because we were talking to the county and the county, you know how like they fixed the road over there on Bolverdy Road? And they didn't talk to us anything, say anything about it, but we also needed to do some repairs that were adjacent to there. We did bring up the option that maybe with the county that we could work to where we could use their equipment when they're doing their roads, like, you know, subcontract, be a, you know, subcontract them to use their material where it would be a less of a cost for the city, correct? Because they're already going to be fixing there. So can we identify how many of those, of these areas would actually be next to somewhere where the county may need to be fixing their roads?
I think the, the one road with the county road next to it would be Casey Road.
Yeah, Casey.
Casey and. Uh, rodeo, yeah, rodeo drive.
That's just two eighty one to the end of the city.
Yeah, two eighty one, yeah, that's next to the, the fire station.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I'd like to see what their plan is for repairing any of these adjacent roads to see if there is a way for us to be able to save some money. I know we allocated one point five million dollars, doesn't need, we need to spend all of it. And we need to get the big buck for the money to repair the roads that we need to get repaired.
And they've actually sent me their list too, I could, I could compare their list and see what roads they're doing this year. I know, I know a few of the roads off the top of my head, it's forty road, the pieces between our section and then Almond Road, I think they're doing some of their almond roads that are, that are about to work, yeah, almond road.
I just think it would be.
I'll check to see if rodeo drive, I might have seen that one on there, but I could, I could.
I just think it would be to our benefit to work with the, the engineer over there, find out where we could work together on some of this, to get some of this accomplished in a short time. And maybe less funds. So hopefully to meet with them, you know, prior to moving forward with this plan.
Yes.
That's a great point, that's a great point, I want to know what their road specs are, you used the good stuff here.
Well, we don't know that answer until we meet with them, Jason.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, more.
It looks like the number of streets in the city that are either very poor or serious is minimal.
Yes.
Do we have that list somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, are any of those items on the proposed project score for fiscal year twenty five or twenty six?
Well, yeah, one of the roads, I think Casey Road is on there.
Okay.
Uh, Casey Road and then he wrote and.
I mean, I, I understand the argument that we should focus on saving money by working on preventative stuff first.
Yeah.
I also know that there are people in the community who are like, this road is trash, when are you going to get to it? So I'm anticipating, sort of, do we have an answer for those folks about where the very serious or very poor things are falling in the plan?
Yes, so I know it's setting sun and sunlight or on the low end as far as the PCI scale. So those are on the list and Casey's on the list as well.
Okay.
Now, again, we do have, you know, next year's plan, another plan after that, so we could definitely give you an idea when that street is proposed.
So if we get a request, we can, we have an answer.
Yes.
Okay.
So I also have a question, Aaron, Aaron, we're planning to do this, like you said, May through July on some of these roads. Let's just take Casey Road, for example. Right now Casey Road is being used as an option for forty six, right? So where are we going to move that traffic to if we're working on Casey Road? I think we need to take into planning that when Tech dot is going to be done with forty six, school traffic that's going through there and any of these roads that we're using right now as a backfield of forty six. So I don't know if your timeline, April to June, would be a, you know, the exact timeline that would be perfect to be able to work on these roads because we're going to have to manage where the traffic is going to go because we don't have a roundabout to get around that, so not sure if you've looked into that.
No, basically the, the study is, is basically data driven as far as the condition of the streets and the roads and optimal time in order to maintain that road. Outliers like, you know, the traffic in forty six are not taken into account on that, that's the big reason why, why this assessment's going out. If, if council decides, if y'all decide to say, hey, let's, let's put a pause on Casey Road and maybe do the following after forty six is done. But, yeah, we can definitely.
I think we'd need, personally, we'd need a little bit more data to go. Or if you're asking us to give you thoughts on a road by road basis, I think we'd need a lot more data points.
I agree.
Speaking for myself, speaking for myself.
Yeah.
I totally agree.
Yeah, I definitely need to see a list of which ones are porous roads and to see the level at which those individual roads falls on it. You know, for example, this one road is a fifty or something like that, you know, it's significantly lower. That might be something that's more important for us to make sure that our citizens have a good road as opposed to redoing any of those roads.
Well, except that I understand the argument.
I know, I understand. Yes, yes, I, I get it, it's just if somebody throws that bad, if they're falling, they probably need a little.
Casey Road you just have from, let's see, forty road, Monica View, that's not all of Casey Road.
Yeah, it's a small piece, small.
It can survive.
Yeah, I mean, you could go far. You could go far and go that late one.
I'm a little bit just cool that, you know, if there are people using it to the cut through for forty six to get your, to get a road closed, maybe they might come away.
Yeah.
Forty six five.
And that one goes on the mill and overlay on, on Casey Road?
Yes.
You know what size chip we're using on that or, is it like three eight?
Yeah, it, it would be like a, like a type P, oh, I mean, so.
Okay.
And when this priority listing on these proposed projects, does it be ordered in which you would, you would attack the work or?
Yes, this is the priority, this is like.
So you do have to go up in then rodeo drives and John Charles and you'd work your way through in this order?
Yeah, basically the, the priority of the list is the, the, if, if, if we're to move forward, then this is the list. If we wanted to remove something, then for example, if we removed spreading oak, then it's not like we're, we're.
I guess what I'm asking. I, I guess what I'm asking is if you're asking us for feedback about, you know, to the mayor's point, you know, do we need to take other things into consideration for this work that's going to be done? For me personally, as a visual person, it might be helpful to see these on a map.
Okay.
And for you to sort of let us know the order in which you would want to tackle that so that we can get a sense of.
So let me stop that right there, in terms of the order in which you want to tackle these roads. When you hire a contractor, that contractor is going to come in and determine the means and methods of the construction job. And it is not, I don't even know if it's legal for us to tell them, I, I think we could suggest to the contractor which roads we want to see first, but when you enter into a contract with the company to come and do your roads, all things being said and done, it is incumbent upon the contractor to determine the means and methods. And if the city is determining the means and methods, we're basically inheriting liability and risking that contract.
That makes, that makes sense, I was responding to his comment that he was looking for input from us.
Yeah, I make a suggestion. You know, this time, this time we're bringing up here are these proposed projects. Why don't you do a proposed timeline on that too, like a little, a graph, because you're not going to chip seal, you can do an overlay at the same time, right? You can solicit the project like that as well with some proposed timelines, like we can do an overlay on this side, these dates, and we can do a chip seal, we know, you know, you can't start till May, maybe April, May, June, July. So you're going to chip seal, you can do just proposed times these would occur, and then another. And then another thing that I think we're out here is that maybe you can do a estimated cost for that. You know, just kind of put a preliminary cost for that road that you're proposing to do. That way we can have a little bit more information to pick, pull what we want to do and where we're at.
And I'd look like see, at least for all the reds, maybe starting to get into some of the yell, the yellows, street names and individual scores.
Yeah, because I agree. I mean, we have, our road has deteriorated hundred percent. Maybe let's just say it's been like that for a year or two years. You know, then that might be to take a jump in the priority poll, right? You know, but uh proposals like that or suggestions like that with an estimated cost, I think will help us. You know, let's just estimate, right, what we think it's going to cost. The fog seals will be a little bit less than, you know, an overlay, you know, an overlay. So just doing any kind of estimating that we can do on that, I think would help us determine that. I mean, it's not, we got to budget it, right? So let's try to budget it on projects.
So my, I have a question. I have a question, Mike. You, so are you saying that we can't just pick the roads that we want to contract for?
No, you can. What what I'm saying is you can't come in and tell the contractor, you're going to work on this contract and do these roads in this order.
Oh, no, I understand that, but we don't have to contract all of these with that contractor. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, because if we do, and there's a possibility that we can save money on some of these and go with this county, then we wouldn't contract all of these out to the same contractor.
Right, no, and and you've got right, your contract with add deducts and and
Absolutely.
All sorts of contingencies in there.
Yep. Yes, I want all the contingency that if they finish early, you know, how they do it. I have one question for um Erin over here. Erin, when you have on here edge repair on all of these, um, is that adding edging or you you are repairing what's already there?
Yeah, we're we're adding some edge repair to that. We're extending some of that that edge repair coming in on the street and at least maybe about a foot in and remove that, salt cut that, um, tack it in with a goo of some heavy oil, get some hot mix, so that way the edge doesn't fail. Taper that edge off some more. Uh typically, you see when edge failures happen is because they don't taper that edge off. And so they don't put enough tack oil, so that's what that that edge repair is.
So if we're doing extension of edges and we're on top of the octagon, how long is the permit from T C Q going to take?
I would have to inch that with you on that question.
This is repair and replacement.
Yeah.
It's not new edging.
Yeah, it's not.
They're not adding anything.
Yeah, 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 you're 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 wherever that edge is at, you're you're petting in about a foot and replacing that edge with new asphalt.
Well, it's the same footprint.
Same footprint.
Same, so we're not expanding. That's what I was asking. Okay.
Erin, it wasn't clear to me, um, maybe you already said this, what exactly are we intending to do to the roads? Can you say rejuvenation? What what are we doing? Are we chip sealing them?
No, no, rejuvenation, um, just explain what uh the condition of a street. A street uh has emotion, has oil on it when it's actually laid down. Uh, the sun deteriorates that road and oxidizes that road. So when it starts to oxidize that road, it starts to remove a lot of that oil and emotion out of that road. A rejuvenation, basically, um, a reglimite that actually is sprayed onto the road so the road could have to absorb that oil back into the road. So therefore, it minimizes and stops the deterioration factor of that road and stops tracking, starts to just extend the life of it.
Similar, it's kind of like a asphalt driveway.
It keeps the water out.
Yeah.
It's a good process to do, especially on a new road, it'll keep that life.
Well, the water penetrates it, will kill the road.
How intrusive is this going to be? I think there's a lot of folks.
Yes, it's one of those things that that we would have to go out there, sit down with H O A, have some, you know, go out there whenever they have their H O A meeting, explain the process, show them videos, kind of extend of the project and kind of let them know what's going to happen.
Everybody hates having tar on the car.
Yeah, well, well, the the good thing about the rejuvenation, there's no tar. It is basically a a reglimite that's applied to the street.
Right.
There's some sand on there to to minimize any type of slipper and any movement. Then a a regenerative scraper comes along afterward and removes the sand and.
Yeah, as long as we're sensitive to that, community would do it.
No, yes, that that would be, that would be more the thing that we would try to do is make sure we go out and educate the folks. And of course, pass out flyers, you know, some companies come out, pass out flyers and educate the uh residents.
Yeah, it's just like a sand and grit seal, right?
Yes.
You know, it's probably like one hour to cure.
Yeah, if if that.
At most.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess our thought is that we need some more information. I think Councilman Watson asked for some more information as, I think, did you also, uh, Councilman Hawkins? Um, that we need a little bit more information to move forward with this.
We weren't anticipating action from council tonight, this is, we're doing exactly what we need. We're we're asking the questions, we'll come back with the information next month and then hopefully have enough information to be able to pass this item, but we weren't expecting passes tonight.
Just feedback.
We just, we wanted to.
This is a very good start.
It's a great start.
Absolutely.
We just need to get the ball rolling as soon as possible, because it needs to get the recent apples. But, you know, starting in April, that's actually kind of late, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 I may uh, you know, talk trees nickels about getting messed with and stuff like that. I mean, there's nothing, you know, concrete as far as that, they they, they're they're going to be more helpful as far as those numbers come along.
Right.
And so.
I'll just read step one and then finally.
But yes, this is a good start.
Is this the most accurate map of all our city streets right now, as you say?
Okay.
Um, can you break that down maybe, if you have a law of street coverage there?
Yes.
If you don't mind, and then um.
I think uh was there one that has? Oh, yeah, no, that's, yeah, we we we've got, we've got a ton of information that.
One other thing I want to recommend too is that, I I think I've mentioned this before, but um your predecessor, I believe, was going to get stops on it, because those have a lifetime expectancy on it too. I don't think we ever heard what happened to those stop signs in the group, the quarter. I don't know if we got it or should have, I've never seen it. So I do want to keep that as a as part of the street thing that we have to update these stops on. Yeah, so I've even seen some that are missing, uh, that got hit or, you know, and I know what happened, right?
Yes.
You know, just some of these older ones that um faded out, kind of like street cutting that we've done, so.
Yeah.
Um.
It's been working almost every month, there's been replaced some.
Yeah, we've we've uh, we've actually, as part of one of our priorities, we go out, night back today, we went out to Blanco Road uh Seminaria, just to kind of see what what signs we needed, any faded signs and and really start that kind of like the street maintenance plans to do a signing.
Right.
To keep those guys on rotation, make sure we tackle those. But yes, that that is one of our.
Okay, and then uh another thing too, so you know, in the facilities and the maintenance side of T C Q, you typically get a a breakdown in your condition of every street or parking lot, whatever the case is. That way you know in five years, I got to go reseal this, you know, this pavement again. So last year, we did a lot of work on the streets. Do we have all the data? Do we have a good com- composed data of what's been, you know, resealed, resurfaced? You know, and what, how many years ago that was done? That way you can get on the cycle of, hey, we did this five years ago, it's time for it to be done again this year.
The best answer to that is is yes and no. Uh, each each of my predecessors in the past have done and filed things differently. So it makes it very difficult to try to find, okay, what have they done? Uh, for example, Casey Road, you know, I went back to last year's presentation on Casey Road uh on what they're going to do to it, what they're supposed to do to it, but it was never done. And so it was like, okay, what what happened? So there's no true data, uh, uh. Yeah, there's no system in place.
You talked about the end course, the sign, roadway, that's.
But we could work towards incorporating that data. We know we've done this this year and it's got a five year lifespan. We can peg that five years out. We know we're doing that plan. We've got to include this.
Yeah, well, we're in a part of that nation, that's.
Well, that's a Mike, that's a Mike, Mike can figure that out.
That's what we talked about, to be a massive amount of money. Yeah, I mean, that's one of our, that's one of the biggest problems that the city's had so far is that there hasn't been any historical collection of this data that, you know, it was like, well, I don't know where this stuff went. You know, and and it's stuff that's been really important, okay, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, I just want to start to work towards that, I guess.
Yeah.
And that was, you know, probably the road is true, even if the spreadsheet's better than nothing.
Yeah.
That was that we have this citywide streets.
Erin, if this is something that you like, let us know. We can have this software street and this could outlive all of us into the future. And I think that would be something we would like to be aware of. And if it has a heavy price tag, that's fine. Really, at the day, tax money for police, roads, safety. So I I see that as a suggestion.
Yes, definitely will.
Mike, Mike, I'm sure we'll have some recommendations.
All right, well, do we have any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I know. Uh, this is uh Ferrari Tim, over the hills, says cape seal. Uh, it's kind of exotic.
Sorry for for throwing a curveball there. It goes, it goes, it goes into extensive uh road maintenance plans that I've done in the past. A cape seal is basically a fog seal with a, a chip seal with a fog seal.
Yeah, it makes a beautiful street.
Yeah, and and it it makes, it it, what it does is you you apply the chip seal, you come back over it with the fog seal. Basically, what it does is it locks that block.
Yeah, it's like a real fine, um, you know, rock emotion that they put on top of it.
Yeah, so it locks it, you don't have that raveling on streets.
Yeah.
You know, where you see an intersection, if you go to intersection, you see a lot of the loose rock on there, but you see it on the driveway. You see it just loose everywhere.
It's a smooth surface.
It's a smooth surface.
It's so, so. Is there a lot of people that do that around here?
You know, the county, we did it a lot and 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 one of the things that it uh that it it just, it looks good, it drives good, and it almost looks like a hot mix road.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, you could always go back and just do your regular uh chip seal on the road.
Right.
Again.
I would like to have like a comparison between the chip seal on Bolverde Road or or Bolverde Hill versus, you know, uh, cape seal.
Yes, yeah.
I'm wondering why, if it's exotic, I don't know, uh, why we picked that for Bolverde Hills and not for other locations? Is there something about Bolverde?
No, actually, I'm sorry, it it's, I actually re uh I I actually, I actually wrapped that cape seal on there because I I I split it apart because I've been getting to a lot of people from Bolverde, it's like, what is a cape seal? Like, okay, well, I just simplified it, then the fog seal with chip seal. And and I forgot to change it on that, on that section.
Understood. So if similar to what we would see on settings forms, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't want to introduce some of you, but after, everywhere else on the front.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be really nice. I just want to, I would like to see the cost comparison between them. I don't know, it's needed and everything, and if we can use those funds.
Yeah, and and again, yes, correct.
Just for a long time, we did with just the chip seal that worked.
Yeah.
And we still got in the contract, they're going to vacuum truck all the streets and everything if they're sweeping up. And they're going to change the nozzle on the truck.
Changing off, cleaning off, you know, all the, you know, make sure the temperatures are right, make sure the rock is is washed, you know, because even a truck rock, you still want to make sure that that the rock is washed.
When do you anticipate putting out?
If if I come back in December, I mean, February, March.
Yeah, I would need to.
March, you know?
I'd like to see it, you know, by the way, you get the contract.
Yeah, as soon as possible, yeah, we can get that.
Okay, we'll still be in trouble.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you. Okay. I'm moving on to three D. Discuss and consider approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bolverde authorizing the acceptance in accordance with the terms of the agreement for wastewater services between the city and S H D J L Development LLC by special warranty deed of certain real property described as point oh eight seven of an acre variable with sanitary sewer easement located in Comal County and by special warranty deed of certain real property described as all of lot nine oh four of the preserve as singing hills unit two. Um. Located in Comal County, plat number two zero one zero nine zero six zero three two nine zero six of the map records of Comal County, Texas and directing the city manager and city attorney of their respective designees to take all necessary actions to clean the land from maintenance to the city.
Wow. Can you say that again? He's exciting. I missed that. And Mayor Council, yet Eric, the public works. Uh, this item is a resolution relating to Singing Hills wastewater treatment plant project as part of the original agreement for wastewater services. Uh, S H D J L Development, developer finance constructed the sanitary sewer collection and treatment system. The agreement requires that once a project is completed, the facility and associated properties are conveyed to the city. Uh, the project has been completed. According to the terms of that agreement, the Comal County Water Control Improvement District number six is uh ready to transfer the required real property to the city. That included two components, which is that point zero eight seven acre variable width sanitary sewer easement located in Comal County and lot nine oh four, the preserve at Singing Hills unit two contains infrastructure tied to the wastewater facility. This resolution simply authorized the city to accept those conveyances by special warranty deed and allows the city to complete all closing actions and filings needed to finalize the transfer. This is just a procedural step required in the existing water treatment service agreement. It finalizes the land command and supports a public water, public wastewater system in Singing Hills. Staff recommends approval resolution.
Is this something that should have been done a long time ago? And just, we just kind of discovered it hadn't been done versus something that's now, it's reached the time when it's supposed to be transferred?
It it's, 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 it it came up, yeah, it just kind of fell through the
Fell through the cracks.
Through the cracks and and the developer just handed over the bill to the H O A president and H O A and they just campaign it and now it's not, it's not.
Okay.
You have any other comments, questions?
I think.
I have a question. What costs come to the city with this conveyance?
What?
What costs?
The electric.
Oh, the electric bill? Yes, uh, the electric bill's three hundred dollars a month, so roughly thirty six hundred dollars a year.
And any other costs come to the city with this conveyance?
Because we already had maintenance.
Yeah, we already had maintenance and operation of the station. It's just the the actual uh electric bill.
Okay, I have a question. How much do we actually make net profit off of this? Do we make net profit off of this?
No, we don't.
Okay, so there's no money, Singing Hills pays us, the development pays us nothing for this treatment plant, correct?
At this point, the uh the agreement with the developer ended this past year. So any overage on the wastewater treatment plant from collection of the fees, the uh uh, the difference was paid by the developer, but that agreement is ended this year. So from this year on, if there is a difference, uh, the city will pay that difference.
Which means we need to realign our rates. We are working on that now.
Yes, and we're.
Actively working on that.
Good questions.
What, what was the percentage amount of usage at this point?
Oh, no, we're 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 still out for that, Mayor. I don't have a final number for you yet.
Okay.
And and I would be hesitant to speculate. We've done our first review of the numbers that I I shot some holes in it and I'm waiting for the second version to come back to me.
Okay, then we'll wait on that. All right, so this is just a procedural movement at this time. Nothing else changes in our agreement, correct? We're just taking this over?
Yes, we we are doing.
Do our rate adjustment? Okay, and we'll do the rate adjustment as soon as possible? We'll look at that, correct?
Yes.
Also, any extra usage out of this, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part of that, Mayor.
I said, we're not changing any extra usage out of this?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
And then just to make sure as well, since this is a conveyance, we've received all the, you know, permanent closeouts, all that has been turned over to us for that facility, right?
Yes, they they, everything has been besides the deed itself and transferred.
Okay. Any further questions or comments, office?
I make emotionally approve the resolution. Can you read that?
Councilman Hayes recommends approval by the three D, seconded by, uh, prosecutor's. All in favor?
I, I.
Motion passes. All right. Moving on to item three D. Discuss and consider approval of a resolution asking votes to elect directors for the Comal appraisal district for the year twenty, twenty six.
Uh, Mayor Council, this is an annual item which allows the state of Bullerty to cast their ballot in the Comal appraisal district for the director selection. Uh, the appraisal district has determined that we have thirty eight votes, of which council can utilize for all on one candidate or divide those votes among any number of the candidates. There are three candidates that were listed in the packet. Um, unfortunately, no biographical information was provided on those proposed candidates. Um, lastly, there's no requirement that council cast their ballot or take action on their right to cast a ballot. Um, should council wish to cast their vote, it just needs to be acted on upon by a resolution.
I can't vote for somebody I don't know.
I, I can't, I was just gonna say that.
Okay, I think on the last month as well, this came up and we, we did no action.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments, Mayor?
Do we need to vote to take no action? No, okay.
All right, so no action taken.
I think it's on the cruise.
Okay. Moving on to all public comments not related to posted agenda. So I have, uh, one public comment speaker, uh, Mr. Henry White. Mr. White? Do you like to come up and give your public comment? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Win or win. Sir, it's your turn if you want.
You're the lucky one.
You've been hurt for a while.
You still have two points. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I'm clear.
I come to give you an introduction of some of the things I do. I came in all much too ago and told you I was buying a building and setting up an architectural office. I've been doing architectural serving for many, many years. Well, now I have an office to do it. And my office is right on Murphy Street. I'm not inside city of Bullerty, but I'm right next door to the city of him. Now, I don't hear too well. I have an architect, doctor, and I expect they're gonna prescribe some hearing devices for me. And so I hope you don't mind if I get a little bit closer so that I can hear you. Now, one thing I'd like to do. Is I want to help the city of Bullerty. And I do architectural engineering services and planning service. I have here a copy of my business card, I made big enough to show you, see. And so I wanted to give you all the copy. Now, some of you were here when I talked before.
Yes, little one.
But, yeah. Many of you were elected in the last election, and so you may not, you may not.
Thank you, sir.
No. But I just wanted to give you a copy, and that's big enough so you can see. And I wanted to give you. And I'll give you what you want to. What I'm saying, I have been doing that, and I want to help you out with what you're doing. Now. One thing that, that I did. Uh, many of you all were not here last year. Now, the, the city bought a new park over here on Bullerty. And that was a couple of years ago. I came in and gave a presentation to, to the ci- city council about some of the things, some of the ideas I had on that park. And I presented a schematic drawing showing some of the ideas I thought should be done. Now, in helping the city, I wanted to say something that, that I did before. The first part of Bullerty Lane. There was some deficiencies on that park. One thing I've been by there, and you have music in the park, you have uh, movies and with music and movies.
I'm sorry, sir.
And I've been down there.
We're out of time right now. I'm sorry, sir, we're limited to three minutes, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate your, your, uh, your business card.
They had a park on the street, and so some of the things I want to let you know, and that's dramatic. I did not want to duplicate that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And one thing that I think he should be done.
Sir, we're gonna move on to the next slide. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And you shut off. But something you should.
Mr. White, you're moving on out of five. Okay, thank you, sir.
He could have a public hearing, see what his wants.
We will.
He could, he could. They just be parked, and I would say that you shut off. One thing that I.
Let me get that right, I, thank you.
To filter and took care of that.
Thank you, sir. All right. Reports of elected officials and city staff on items of community, do we have any reports? Okay, all right, moving on to item six. Let's see. All right, executive close session, so, uh, looking for the orders for that, uh, section.
Get them read them.
Yep.
That's why the mayor didn't shut.
All right, all right, so, six second, we're gonna discuss and receive. Legal advice regarding a development agreement with Johnson Ranch pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Which allows the city of Bullerty City Council to meet in closed session to consult legal counsel on matter which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five five one of the government code. Item six B, the city council will meet in executive close session to seek the advice of legal counsel about pending litigation as follows. Lisa H. Cook, person, city of Bullerty. Cause number C two oh two five dash oh seven four zero eight lawsuit pending in the twenty second district court of Comal County. Pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Which authorizes close session for a governmental body to consult with its attorneys regarding advice on legal matters pertaining to pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer. Or in, or on a matter which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the open meetings act. Item six C, discuss or receive legal advice regarding an interlocal agreement with the Comal Independent School District for provisions of law enforcement services. Pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Which allows the city of Bullerty Council to meet in closed set session to consult legal counsel on a matter which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five five one of the government code. We will go into session at seven forty seven.
Mayor, jump off this one, closer to me, and then I'll jump. Mayor, you have a difficult question?
Yes.
Oh, no, you'll need to exit this room and join the Teams link. Because I can't hold two Zoom meetings at once, and then we don't want your, your audio to be heard on. Thank you.
So that said, we will be adjourned at 9:08. Thank you.
Yes, the way to go.